To the September 10, 2013, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. All members in attendance tonight with the exception of Prince Pacelli. We've certainly had a busy month here in town, which is not really reflected in the rather light agenda for tonight, but those who've been around know there's been several unfortunate occurrences, not the least of which was the untimely murder of Officer Jason Schneider, who lived here in town, and so that's a loss not only to the county but to the entire community here. So before we get started, I think it's appropriate that we have a moment of silence. First order, official business. Now if we have three or four months now in a row we have public hearings, not having any public hearings, is the approval of the August 13 minutes. You have a copy in your packet. Have a motion to-
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all's in favor? Say aye. Good. Next is a receipt of the August 2013 check register. I guess you did get this done, Kelly?
It's just the check register.
Just check register, okay. So we don't have a treasurer's report yet, but we do have a check register, so if there's a motion, we'll receive the check register and then catch up on the-
Make a motion to receive the check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report-
Do you second that?
I'm Dale.
Dale? Mayor's report again is pretty light. I would like to commend the entire public and certainly our police department for their handling of the very busy and high-profile funeral that was in town. There were thousands and thousands of people and police officers from all over the state and country, and really there's several things going on behind the scenes here in town. So both our police, our town staff, Steve, everybody really pulled together and did an excellent job on that. That is really all I have. Welcome Natalie. Did you have practice tonight?
Oh, I haven't.
In Tawny Town?
It was the town council.
Okay. All right, so those of you that didn't notice, there's also an article in the paper for the past couple of weeks, recognizing the town council here for bringing the youth representative back on board, so that was definitely good press, and looking forward to next year or so, working with Natalie. That's all I have. Steve?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and start with the administrative report. Yesterday, we had a update meeting with Sheetz representative in regards to the MTBE issue. I thought the update meeting was pretty lame, to tell you the truth. There were no handouts that were given out. I think that the company that did the work for Sheetz basically skimmed over some issues. The bottom line is this, though, the information that we have received, the remediation, it does seem to be working down there, and the product is being pulled out. I just thought that more information could be given to people to bring them up to speed on where we're at. The representative from Sheetz, Dave Dodson, their environmental representative, did say that the town could expect possibly within the next 90 days some preliminary drawings on the new Sheetz store in that area. I think that's good news, but I think the other good news is, again, the remediation system is working on the MTBE, and the state may allow them to shut the system off for several months to see if the levels come up. And then if the levels come up, then we have to take a step back and see what has to be done down there. So in a nutshell, it seems to be working, so. Under the State Highway Administration projects, there's no change. I did attend the pre-tour meeting for the Maryland Department of Transportation that was held on September 5. I mentioned to you folks last month that I cannot attend the tour meeting where the Department of Transportation Secretary will be out. That will be on September the 19th at 1:30 in room 003 of the county office building, or now, which is called the Reagan Room. I did bring some information back. I believe Councilperson Howe mentioned that she may be able to attend that meeting, so I put that in your mailbox out there. The secretary will be present, and if we have any concerns, that is the date to bring them to the secretary's attention. So I know there was some possible concern about the Route 30 bypass, the Manchester bypass, so I forward that information on to you. Our MEA grant, our Maryland Energy Administration grant, that is moving forward. Our Sustainable Communities Work Group, we did have a meeting on September the 4th. Our application was reviewed. We went through that page by page. I feel that both Jim and Jared Schumacher did a fantastic job. I was in communication with a representative from Maryland Department of Planning, Ashley, at that MDOT meeting, and it was mentioned that we may want to pull in our sustainable community boundaries. And I know Councilperson Black was at that meeting, and she made it pretty clear to me at this meeting that you may want to do that. So today, we met with Jared, and we did draw those boundaries in. So I think we'll have smooth sailing now. As I said, the work group, we went through that application page by page. We're very impressed with what they come up with, so over the next several weeks, that should be completed and mailed down to the planning department for review. So I'm pretty happy with that. Under new construction, new construction continues, code enforcement continues. Under miscellaneous items, I did attend a WRCC meeting on August 28, and our focus was setting up agenda items for the meeting with the Department of Environment on September the 25th, and that's in regards to the WIP, or the Watershed Implementation Plan. I have an action item on the agenda for tonight, and that's the sale of the 2004 Dodge Intrepid. And if it's okay, Mayor Warner, if I can come back to that.
Absolutely.
So, okay, moving right along, we'll go over the August Public Works Report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for August. If you look through that, the wells are holding their own. We haven't had much precipitation over the last three weeks, so you know, you might see some change come up sometime around October. But one thing that saves us now is everybody's closing their pools, they're not topping their pools off, so flows are going to relatively go down over the next month or so. I want to congratulate our water supervisor, Delbert Green, for passing his Class III Water Treatment Certification Exam. The Manchester Valley High School Water Pumping Station training has been completed, and we're working with the contractor and the designer, and we're completing some punch-out items on that station down there. You may have seen, you may not have seen, the demolition of the old York Street water tank is complete. That's gone. Our maintenance people cleaned everything up, planted grass seed up there, and that's forgotten about it there. Under wastewater, staff is currently reviewing the draft NPDS permit for stream discharge and spray irrigation. Ashley, that was completed today. I made copies of that letter to the Department of Environment. I put them in each one of your boxes. If you need explanation on some of the items, just give me a call and I'll go through that. Some of the things that they're making us do, I think is uncalled for. I think it's going to cause a financial burden on the town, and I made that very clear in my letter, you know, that I addressed in some of the questions that I have at the department. The upper unit for the grit removal system at the wastewater plant has arrived, and it will be installed over the next several weeks under stormwater, NPDS, and WIP. At the request of Commissioner Frazier, we have supplied her office with our current water and sewer budgets, hookup fees, and our fiscal year 12 audit. This request came out of a commissioners' meeting in which Commissioner Howard brought up the possibility of utilizing county environmental funding to assist municipalities in meeting the stormwater requirements. I watched that meeting. I don't know what the connection is between water and sewer and stormwater, but that was a request that was asked, and we supplied that information. Kelly did a fine job on that, so we got that. Also, there's going to be a meeting planned over the next several weeks. Mayor Rupp from New Windsor is putting this meeting together. I don't know, I don't have all the ins and outs of that meeting, so I don't know too much about that. Also, there was supposed to be a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I emailed everybody. A gentleman was coming in that works out in the western states. Funk and Bolton, a law firm, was bringing him in to talk to the group. I was going to attend tomorrow, it was between 1:00 and 3:00, and then for some of the electeds tomorrow night, between 6:00 and 8:00, or something like that. That's been canceled, so that's a no-go. So there's a lot of things going on as far as stormwater is concerned. I don't know which way the commissioners are going, I don't know what direction they're going to take. At the end of the day, we're going to have to do it. It's a federal mandate, and we ought to prepare ourselves, and I think we're one of the towns that is aligned and prepared, you know, to do something about. So I'll keep you updated as much as I can, but this is like a juggling act. I mean, nobody knows which way they're going, so anyway. Under maintenance roads and parks, the street resourcing project should be completed by this Friday, the 13th, and the main street trees were trimmed on September 5 and 6. One thing that I have, and this is an action item, it's not on my report, last evening, Councilperson Howe, Councilperson Black, and I attended the monthly board meeting of the Manchester Parks Foundation. There were three representatives present from the Westminster Astronomical Society Incorporated of Maryland, and they gave a presentation to the boards, to the board, in regards to partnering with the foundation, in regards to installing an observatory in the general proximity of Charlotte's Quest Nature Center. And I am asking permission from the mayor and the council to grant the nature center permission to partner with this group, to allow them to install an observatory on the property back there. I think it, I think, this is my own personal opinion, I think it would just enhance that area back there. I think it would be a plus for the kids. The way this would work would be, the building would be owned by the society. They would be responsible for the insurance. The electric, which we currently pick up now, the little bit of electric that they would use would not amount to that much. I did ask a question in regards to, does someone from the society have to be there to show the children, you know, how to operate the telescopes and everything? And they said no. They would be willing to train some of the folks back at the nature center, that they could, you know, they could do this during the daytime hours. Apparently, there's a screen, a sunscreen, that you can put on, the 14-inch telescope that they would have. So the kids coming back from school during the daytime hours would have the same benefit more at night. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good move, you know, for the town. Councilperson Black, Councilperson Howe, I mean, do you, did I kind of cover everything there?
Yeah, just that the opportunity exists for probably a single telescope at the 14-inch size-
Correct.
But there may be some possibility of having up to three in a larger building that they would still provide, and our only requirements would then be to support the electricity needs-
That's correct.
And perhaps just understanding that a cement pad would need to be placed on the property and-
Yes, the single building, the single building pad, I believe, was-
It's 11 by 14, about?
11 by 14, yes. And then the larger pad, of course, for the larger building would-
It's like 24 by 36.
24 by 32.
Correct. That is correct, yes, yes.
Do you want to go right to the big building? Are they going to build a small one that would then be added on later?
No, actually, I have some photographs. There was a member of the society that actually, this is not homemade, it is a professional observatory.
Oh, yeah.
He assembled this at his house, and it has been moved to, I believe, Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania. And the family wants to donate it back to the society, and the family and the society would have it moved to the location. The society is willing to spruce it up and put some nice-looking siding, you know, vinyl siding, or anything basically we want, you know, spruce it up. So it's a win-win for everybody. I mean, they would get it here, and basically, they're looking for someone to put the pad in, you know, to volunteer their time and effort and money to put the pad in. The other building, this is the larger building, this is a drawing that they had made up, and they actually, it shows here Bear Branch Nature Center, but of course, the gentleman from the society said they had to put a name on there. They're not committed anywhere to this building. They do have funding for this building. This is a larger building, as Councilperson Black had mentioned, with a sliding roof. The roof actually slides, and that would, that would house three telescopes, I believe, 14-inch, 12, and 10, I believe they said, yeah. So that would be a larger, larger building, larger structure. I got the feeling personally that we would probably get that one.
Probably going to be this.
So it's an either-or?
Right, right.
And there's no cost to the town, other than maybe some, some small amount of electric?
Correct, correct. That particular building there, I believe it has a few lights on the inside. I believe it has a receptacle on the outside and maybe a receptacle on the inside. They mentioned that in that particular picture, it's in a remote area. Did they mention that the guy powered that by battery?
Marine battery. Currently, he said it's by battery.
Yeah.
But ideally, if you were to hook up a computer to it or similar technology, which you could then track data-
Right.
It wears it down real fast.
So the draw is very minimal, minimal amp draw, yes.
Not, yeah, not a big deal.
I think it sounds like a great idea. Is this something that we should be publicizing? I mean, this could create more traffic for the residents? Is it something else we should be doing?
I think, oh, I can't think of it. Ellen Rogamer mentioned that they do a lot of star gazing at Bear Branch. Is it Bear Branch?
Yeah, Bear Branch, that's where they have it.
Yeah, so I think a few times a year, it would probably increase the traffic going back Wilhelm Lane, but I don't think really we'd see a really big increase, any different than, let's say, when the Boy Scouts meet back there. The Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts meet back there, so I don't think it's a big, big problem.
It's not putting the rail farms back there, or something?
No.
Yeah, if you don't think it'll have a negative impact on the residents, the citizens, then I love the idea.
No, I really don't. I think, yeah, I think the biggest, the biggest decision that the foundation has to make, working with the society, is where to put it, where, you know, where to locate that. I know they had, you know, some concerns. It'd probably go out in the, in the field, you know, to the one section you have a sideline. Yeah, so.
You guys both felt good about it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. How should we structure a, an action item? Should we structure a motion that we're willing to move forward with each of your projects?
Well, I would recommend that what they're looking at is permission from this group to go ahead and allow them, you know, to come in and put the building up. There has to be some work done, and I would recommend leaving that up to the nature foundation to craft an MOU between the foundation and the society and possibly the town. So I think that an MOU has to be crafted, you know, that everybody's happy with, but I think this is a good first step to give them permission to go ahead and do that, so.
I would be comfortable with doing that, but I would want them, after they've put their plans together, at least let you review that.
Oh, yeah, that would be no problem.
I wouldn't be concerned with them coming back to us, but I would want you to see their total plans before they go forward.
Right, and I think that, and they've been doing a very good job at that, you know, bringing things back and forth to the town, so, yeah.
Are they looking for volunteer labor, put the pad in?
They would like some, a company to volunteer to put it in, a concrete company that would donate the concrete and the labor, so.
I don't have a concrete company.
They were, they were given some leads last night.
Yeah, they probably were. What's, what's their timeframe?
No timeframe was given. I think, you know, it made it sound, you know, once they get everything lined up, it's a possibility, maybe, I would say, several months, maybe three months.
Okay, this year?
Yep.
This fall?
This year.
Hey Natalie, are there, at the high school, maybe some applicable clubs or science groups or something that we could help plug into this?
This year, actually, a big focus at our school is academies, and each student, when they come into the school, selects like a career field that they're going to focus on, and they're like class electives. And I think there's a STEM academy, which is science, technology, engineering, and math, and I think that they would definitely be interested in getting involved with this somehow.
And they could get service hours for that, if they volunteer there, I would think, as well. Wouldn't that count?
Yeah. I mean, if we have a resource like this, we can plug in some young people that could also use it and learn from it. Huh? Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that, yes, that we let them go ahead, go forward with it. Second, go ahead.
So if I could just add to that motion that-
Oh, go ahead.
Just to make a motion that the town will, will support the nature center and the acquisition, the placement of a observatory, could be of a variety of sizes, and that at minimal of any cost to the town.
It's to be reviewed before a final.
And Steve will be a part of all the decision-making process along with that was already predetermined at the meeting last night.
I'll second the motion.
I won't ask you to repeat that.
Just write it. Sure the motion is seconded and there's discussion? All's in favor, so you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Can't say the word today. Motion carries. That's good.
I had one more item in regards to the nature center. My friend John Kelvey just walked in, and he was running late. John, they had mentioned last night that they were very impressed with the story that you did on the bocce ball tournament. So it's good that I publicly acknowledge you for that, so good job on that, so. Second action item, that is the sale of the 2004 Dodge Intrepid, and I gave the mayor and council a copy of the bid tabs. I will tell you this, that Kelly guessed the bid of 4151. She has withdrawn her bid. She has found another vehicle for her son, I believe. So the next bid in line was from Scott Henderson for $1,050.
$1,050?
$1,050, yes.
So we have one bid, this is an action item, the motion to accept the-
Do we know, just real quick, what the value of the car is?
Blue Book value is showing me about four grand. That car is not really-
Okay, not great.
Mr. Henderson did a, a comparison of repair.
Okay.
That's how he rated his bid.
Okay.
And he's probably in the ballpark.
Okay.
And we're still ultimately paying for insurance? Are we paying for anything for it, still costing us in some way to maintain it?
Insurance. Of course, after the last council meeting, I had to make that small repair on the brake bar.
And this is the second time we bid it?
This is, it could be the third.
Okay.
Yeah. This car is bought from me.
Okay.
Okay. So make a motion? I make a, make a motion to accept the bid for the '04 Dodge Intrepid of $1,050?
I'll second the motion.
Motion in the second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for me? I think that's it. Oh, sure. Oh, I got it. Can you go, can you go to the mic, Scott, I'm sorry.
Back on the, the concrete pad for the nature center, I know VOTAC's always looking for something. It's only a 12 by 14 pad, I mean-
That's a good point.
It's a great idea.
That is a very good point, because-
I know that the guys in the shop are always looking for stuff over there, and there is a, I think there is a masonry. You might, you might be able to check for us and see if there's a masonry division over at VOTAC.
There is. I'm positive of that. That's, that's a very good point, yeah.
He'd probably afford to put a $2 plaque on there for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Anything else for Steve? All right, thanks, Steve. Moving along, we have police report, and we covered some of this already with the goings-on in town, and to give everyone an update. The application process is closed for the open chief position. There was packets made for everybody on the council, hope they already had the opportunity to stop and put this up. I know I talked to, to a couple of you guys. So where we're going to go from here is, I've asked everyone I've talked to to kind of give me their top couple. I think there was, give or take 20 in there, and obviously, we're not going to interview 20 people, but we will interview the top couple, and I think we'll pick the top two or three, interview those three. If you feel good about moving together with one of those individuals to the next stage, which would be a background check, we'll select a back, a police agency that isn't related or as far removed from that individual as we can realistically, and then we'll go from there. So I know I've had conversations with Dale and with Councilman Howe, so-
Are we having, are we meeting about this at all, or no?
Do we have an executive session?
We can, if you want to discuss individual names, as far as hiring, as far as process. We'll have, Dale's on the committee, and me, and we're going to select somebody from, from police.
No, I totally agree with that. I just want to, I just think that we should maybe have one meeting, and maybe if you're going to take everybody's opinion, I mean, obviously, you guys are going to pick who you want, but take everyone's opinion, so we actually do this correctly from start to finish, so there's no question about anything that was, you know-
I think that it would probably be informational. If you want to have that meeting, we can have that meeting, so you can-
I mean, I'm just something to touch on it and move on. What do you think?
For the record, I may be part of the search committee, I'm not part of the selection committee.
Okay.
So as far as our charter goes, it's, it's pretty vague, right? It's that the mayor nominates somebody, and it takes three this vote. So we really want a process, you know, like, I don't know if there's a right or wrong, the right process is what gets us to the right answer. So I'm trying to, I guess, get as much feedback as I can, and you guys are more than welcome to sit in on any and everything that, that happens, so that you feel comfortable and you feel good about the direction that we're going in, and when we pick somebody, you know, I would like everybody to be as on board as possible, and we'll support whoever that person is, and let's move forward together.
Okay.
So that's where we are on that. So if you have your packet, if you want to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting.
Just something quick, just to review, I think would be a good idea, so everybody's on the same page, and then move on. I mean, that's my opinion, and you're on the committee, so you can make that decision.
I agree with you, I value everybody's opinion, and I think we all have responsibilities to this town, so I think we should all have input.
Everybody's, everybody's opinion's going to matter.
It's the mayor's decision.
That's my opinion.
Right, he's going to make it, that's fine.
He should hear our, all of our opinions.
So I'm really not trying to do this in a vacuum?
I know.
Okay.
That's why I said that I think it's best if it's just, you know, there's no question, it's all done that way, and that way, there's no-
Yep, I'm good with that. The other thing in here, and you have some data in here from Charmel Drive and the speed camera, or speed camera, the speed trailer has been over there. I guess it's pretty indicative of what we usually see, in that, you know, that 80 to 90% are kind of within, or maybe not the actual, at the absolute speed limit, which is just 20 over there, but it's a, it's a tough location, it's a very wide street, very, very flat and open, so, you know, people are going to drift, you know, probably go faster than 20, but you have that 80 to 90% that's, you know, within nine miles an hour of the speed limit, and then some, you know, really outlandish outliers that, you know, need to be addressed, so. That one from 71 to 80 at 8:00 PM.
I'd like to know who that was.
Jeez, yeah, that's, that's at dusk, you know what I mean, you have people in the street.
Right, when kids are out in the street, before they come in, yes.
Right. Now, thankfully, it's, it's one over the course of, you know, this entire report, but-
Still one's too many at that speed.
Yeah. So, you know, agree, and we'll continue to move this around, and if people out there have concerns about a certain street or a certain area, you know, please let us know. We're trying to be as responsible as we can to, to those areas that, you know, have a speed issue, both with the trailer and the enforcement. Any questions?
Not about that. When you're through with your police issues, I want to just say a whole thing.
Okay, go ahead.
It's been brought to our attention by several people in the town and some concerns about the synthetic, I'm sure everybody's heard about it in the paper and/or read about it or heard about it from friends or whatever, about the synthetic drugs. I'm speaking on something called- I'm speaking on something called Spice, I'm speaking on Molly, and there's some other things out there. There's been several mun- municipalities that have banned this, made it illegal, um, in their town, which is something that I'd like to discuss, and I think, you know, for everyone who lives here, it's something that we don't necessarily want, and, um, I would like to bring that up, and maybe next week have a dis, next month, have a discussion on it and go from there and see what we can do about the same process. There's several, uh, I believe with Frederick County, Ocean City, I believe somewhere in PG County, there's, there's several that have already done it. I think it's something with our small town that maybe we need to think about, consider, and handle that before it gets out of hand and, and progresses.
Are you aware of, are there some, um, so you, you mentioned some municipalities, like, like, obviously, uh, Ocean City is one, I'm sure that they would-
Michelle did a little research today, and so did one of the police officers.
Okay. On some draft language?
Um, of the different areas and the different municipalities of what, what they've done, and I'll have, I have it, I'll show it to you as well, pass it around, but-
My experience with these things and these coming up in the past, I, I think it was more on a, on a county basis a few years ago, is that the enforcement needs to be, like, very specific in terms of what we're talking about.
We're gonna speak to the attorney, well, I'm, somebody was gonna speak to the attorney to see how we have to word it, and there's some wording in here, we're PG County's, um, council passed the law, Frederick, all of Frederick passed it, Ocean City passed it, so we can get some information from them as well, but we just wanna encapsulate it, like we were saying, is maybe not just say one or two things surrounded by synthetic, because if six months down the road, they come up with something else, we don't wanna go through this again.
Right. But we, you know, I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit here, but we don't wanna make it so general that it's not enforceable either. So, if you just say, like, synthetic drugs, you know, what, I don't, is that caffeine? I don't know what it is.
No, that would be like, the things-
I mean, I, I know what you mean, but-
Okay, okay.
Let's, so I think we need to, let's, let's spend next month, and if you, if you're willing to take this on, like who else was, was interested or was part of the conversation, but let's, let's look at what everybody's doing, and then see if we can come up with something that's gonna work for us.
Okay.
That's specific enough to be enforceable, but general enough to apply to more than one or two things, too.
I would like to also add on to Melinda's thoughts that we should seek the counsel of our local Bureau of Prevention, Wellness and Recovery, 'cause they are our leading county experts on this problem. Um, the Bureau of Prevention, Wellness and Recovery, and I know those folks directly that they would provide us with some education if needed, and provide support as well as to our legal counsel on the wording, because they've been facing this, um, on a statewide level, and they've been dealing with it across the state, and they're a part of that action team.
I just think if we could be proactive and have it here before, you know, it may take a while to get it approved throughout the state of Maryland or, or wherever, but-
It's a start.
Okay.
Because, Mayor, you're, you're very cor- correct in that, um, every time legislation or anybody on any local or, or statewide level does any kinda action, um, things are synthesized to be just a slightly bit different-
Right.
And then they can't do anything about it, so.
Hopefully, the attorney can point us in the right direction, along with, with the Bureau of Prevention and then give us the, how, the wording, we can probably get some of that, right?
Yeah.
That'd be great, I think.
Okay.
I think this is definitely worth examining. I'd be curious if they, if their results indicated that it eliminated the problem or they just create crime.
We will, um, there's some articles here that-
I'd be curious if they had any statistics on that.
There's some articles here that you might wanna read about that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and, and sometimes, just my opinion, we talked a little bit about this before, that some of these, some of these synthetic things that aren't technically illegal are the most dangerous things.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the same way the household chemicals are, and computer cleaners and everything else, some of that stuff is-
They've recently had a couple deaths with some teenagers over, a couple of them, so it's something I think that we need to start, because I don't think a lot of people, parents, whatever, are aware of it, it's something new, and I think it would be something that we need to make people aware of. Not necessarily that's all of our job, but I'd like to stop it before it goes to the next level.
Right. Okay, yeah, let's, let's definitely work on that, if you can, do, do you mind taking the lead on that over the next, next month?
Yeah, I'm sure Debbie can have some info on everybody, but I mean-
Okay.
With our, with some background we have, I think we could get some information.
Okay. Anybody sign in to talk?
Just Scott.
You're just trying to pick up your keys?
Yeah.
Welcome.
All right, then we'll, uh, we'll go down the, uh, committee reports.
Okay. There was not a meeting before, after the last meeting from when I reported, so I don't have, they just canceled one September, we have one in October, October tenth, I believe.
Okay. Councilman Black?
We haven't had a meeting, we're having one next Tuesday for planning and zoning with some new activity, and I think Steve aptly covered the sustainability task force, so we're moving forward. I have to say that the application is excellent, it's a ten. So, we're in, we're in good shape with that.
That was a, yeah.
Application.
Actually, our committee brought up at our last work group that they would like to continue on, uh, maybe, of course, not meet in a monthly basis, but maybe a quarterly basis, and I, I'm very impressed with that group. That group brings a lot to the table, and it, and creates a think tank for the town. A lot of good ideas come out of that, and that will, that will keep moving on, yeah, so I'm pretty impressed with that.
Councilman Howe?
Yes, I attended the Rackin Parks meeting last night with Councilperson Black, who introduced me to these lovely people, and the main item discussed was the approval of the observatory. The other thing is that there's a bocce ball tournament on October the fifth, and there's still room, and I have an application here.
At Mr. DePalmer's sign?
That, yes, who has told me, if you're watching, that seven times he has asked, oh, wrong paper. Seven times he's asked for us to play.
He came to our meetings two months ago, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, I, when I signed my name, I just need three more of you, if you want to do it.
I, I would love to do, I, I can't do it that day, but I would love to do one.
Sure. How about you?
But I, I would not help you.
October the, I don't know how to play either, but October the fifth. How about you guys? Can, can I, you guys?
I, I will commit to looking and getting back to you in the next three days.
Yes, I have to look, I'll double check.
They said they'd commit to getting back to me, if you're watching this.
What day of the week is it?
It's a Saturday, it's from eight A M. until, and if anybody-
You are welcome to join in the fun, too.
Yes. If anybody else is out there, he still has room for two or three more teams of four to six people, so please, because that, the money helps Charlotte's quest.
Oh, and you're welcome to go practice, we said ahead of time.
And they average about a thousand dollar proceeds from the event, so it keeps their, their budget just active.
And October the sixth is their autumn, autumn planting, and if anybody has not seen this, you can give a gift of nature for a small donation, you can dedicate a tree to someone, a loved one, or s, or just, you know, in memory of or in honor of someone, and they are ex, have only received like six, so get out there, spend your money, plant a tree, okay? And that's it. If you're not gonna play bocce ball, at least buy a tree. Yes, yes, you can.
I'll buy a tree.
That's it.
All right, Councilman Wilder?
All right. Capital project, I understand that there was some discussion last week on the solar energy project? Is that right, Steve? Was it driven off a small? Discussion on it? And it was decided that we would table that? Okay. I fully disor, I fully support that decision. I will be attending the next, the upcoming M M L. meeting, I think, is that next week?
Next Thursday, the nineteenth.
Okay, so I'll, I'll bring you in.
I'm going.
Good.
You're going, Tammy?
Yeah.
The M M L. meeting on Thursday?
No.
Okay.
Anything good comes out of that, I'll certainly report it, but I'll be there.
You sound hopeful.
There's to be good things coming, but I can tell you that.
I'm sure it'll be on Stormwater Management's.
Yeah.
I'm sure of it.
That's it for me.
Natalie, do you have anything off from the youth representative?
Um, I, so we were talking about, I talked with, um, Mr. Miller about beautifying the town, like decorating Main Street, and I've been working with our school's F F A. and environmental club to see if we can get some plants planted in our greenhouse over the winter, so they can be planted in the spring. And I have just recently started talking with our school's video production team about doing a documentary on the town. I've also looked into making a Facebook page. What I think we're gonna have to do is just make a public page, and then, as we see needed, if there is like inappropriate comment, block people, and posts can also be removed from the page if necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a good, that was my only concern that we talked about, but other than that, I think it's great.
That's, that's easily-
Yeah. That can be handled. We would be monitoring it, or who's monitoring that?
I can monitor it, I mean, if somebody else wants to do it.
Is speech critical of the government, considered to be inappropriate? Yeah.
I, I love the idea of beautifying the town, and you know, it would really look nice with some banners. Where, where do we stand on that?
We have, um- You and I, we're gonna get banned, cause of that.
Okay.
Truthfully, I was just in, um, in Emmitsburg the first time, you know, it's sad, and they have one of their black lampposts, and they, um, have them on both sides, now they're smaller.
Yes.
But I thought, I kinda like the idea of having it on the black poles, now that the trees have been trimmed, 'cause I know some of the black poles are, you know, in between some, but once you get closer to the square, you have, you have a little bit more visibility of those, um, so, I mean, that's an option, too, 'cause originally, we're looking at the streetlights, and that's, jump through more ho, um, hoops with that, and you have to be a certain, you know, foot above, um, I think at least fourteen feet above the streets, if it's gonna be over the street and so forth, so I kinda like the idea now that I've seen them in, in Emmitsburg, that maybe we could do that, so we have money just waiting to be spent on them.
Okay.
And how about just in general, you know, we obviously have homeowners in town who take pride in their homes, some don't. We had some business owners come in, like Tom Bolton, and brief-faced buildings, made it look very nice. Is there something we can do to incentivize other property owners to make improvements? Can't force them to, as long as our meeting code, but can we do something to encourage them?
I would like to do that, because I can see, it almost creates a domino effect, and you can see it, it's slow, but you can see when one homeowner does it, you know, it seems like a couple doors down the neck, but if we had something, an incentive for these people to do something, I think it would help out. I did do some checking, uh, with Home Depot and Lowe's to see if I could get, you know, basically a reduced price on materials. If somebody was doing some work on, at their house, they go over there, I couldn't get past the contractor's price, that was the best deal they could, but if you had some incentives, you know, that the people would, you know, that they would-
Unfortunately, I don't think it's the homeowners, it's, it's the landlords. So, we need to reach out to the landlord association and make, 'cause ninety percent of people who don't touch their homes are rent, are renters.
Maybe a tax credit, just something to give the, you know, 'cause you're right, most of the problems are not the people who live there.
That's true, that's true.
And they're not incentivized as renters to do anything, it's something they don't own.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah. So, we can, we can check into that.
Something to think about, this-
You know, think about some, some ideas to, to make our landlords, you know, come up to standard.
Or at least making them aware that we'd like to have some-
Right.
Community effort and announce a launch date or something, I don't know.
Correct, correct. Very good.
What if, um, Natalie brought up a couple things here, and I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, I know it's a public meeting, but what if we create, kinda like in town here, 'cause I know with, some is, you know, we meet once a month formally as a group, and Steve and Kelly and the staff really, um, you know, they, they get bogged down in, in the business of operating the town, and there's all kinds of stuff that has to be done on a daily basis that just has to be done. But what if we, just so we can kinda keep track of some of these things, maybe just here in town, real simple, just create like an idea board, right? And, and those are ideas, the idea is how can, you know, we wanna, we want town to look nicer, or we want, how, how do we incentivize people? And then, just brainstorm, and we'll just keep tracking this going, it can be someplace public, so people can come in, and maybe they can, maybe someone else has an idea out there.
I, I really think you see that coming out of that sustainability committee. Uh, we had, we had the barber, Gino DePalma, Gino came in, he, he gave me the idea, you know, about the planters, which hooks up to, you know, Natalie, hooks up to the school, so that's a start, and I think you'll see, you know, things will build off of that, so I-
What if there was some local landscaping companies that in their, because it's getting to be a slow season or whatever, would be willing to offer them discounts, like maybe some local, I don't know, that'd be willing to offer maybe some of the people that own the rentals that don't have time to do it, do something for them at a discounted price or something? I mean, there may be somebody out there that's willing to do that.
Like the nursery on Route twenty-seven, going to Westminster, you know, they're coming to the end of the year, and they may have some stock left over, you know, something like that.
Who knows? Yeah, and, I, you know, maybe as we get more and more people to join Facebook, or, or, you know, a town Twitter account, whatever it's gonna be, that social media's not gonna go away, it's gonna-
Right.
Whatever the name of it is, it'll grow. We get more and more people to join that thing, and then we throw these things out on there and say, here's what we're looking to do, who can help and how.
Correct.
And then, you know, that, now, kinda, rather than five of us sitting here-
Right, right. You'd be surprised probably how many people that maybe, there's a lot of people that maybe just want something to do, they're not worried about the money, I mean, there's some, you know, you never know.
The bottom line is, you have to get, you have to get the public to buy into the, buy into it. The properties, you start looking around, the properties are coming up, they're looking nice, and then you got that one or two lone landlords staying out there, that's, you know, maybe I should do something, I mean, you're always gonna have a few that's not gonna do anything, but, you know, maybe you could-
Yeah, but if everybody but the two makes theirs look nice, then maybe that'll put a little more-
That's right.
-pressure on for them to care a little bit more.
Hey, Steve, are, are we still looking to plant, um, evergreens in Christmas Tree Park?
Yes, uh, yes, we're still, we're moving some trees up there, uh, the best time to do it is in the fall of the year to make some transplants, so yes, we're still doing that.
Is this something we talked about a couple years ago, I don't, I don't know if it's realistic or not, but, you know, what if we had a, just a program in town where if people get the, you know, the Christmas trees with the bulbs on them? And then we try to just create a program, like, rather than, you know, cutting all these trees down and throwing them away, we encourage people to get the ones with the bulbs, and they bring them up, they ship them up there, then we can use our equipment, put the hole in the ground, and people can start putting their Christmas trees up at Christmas Tree Park.
I mean, that's something that they could-
We could set up a day that we would pick up anyone who left theirs outside, you can't expect them to bring them and deliver them, too.
Yeah, some people won't.
You know, one day in the, whatever, January fifth, if they go around and they pick up whoever has one with the bulb that they can take and let them deli, you know? You don't wanna say, can you buy it, deliver it, and would you plant it, too, while you're there? there?
Well, some people might.
No, I know, I'm just kidding, but, you know.
I mean, it wouldn't be a huge program, but it, you know, it's...
I would do that.
I would probably do it, too, I think. I sort of just feel bad, like, casting these trees out, I don't know why, you know? Somebody?
Yeah, he wants to say.
The idea of trying to make the town, the beautification barn is definitely, and one idea I'm sitting back there with is, you know, it goes from, like he said, the planters, to the flowers, to the, you know, that type of thing, if we came up something with the school to put, you know, I own this building over here, if the school came up with planters, and they would cost 200 bucks for the school to build them in the shop, and then they're gonna put plants in them, maybe give me a 5 or 10% break on my water bill, or, the water bill popped in my head, but I would say, okay, I'd agree to a certain pre-planned thing with the town, once I implement it, I get a stamp from Michelle, that says I'm eligible for some type of something. You might get some of the others, Jack, and Ray, and some of the other landlords, writing that down, or for selling, you know, even if it's 100 bucks a year, my water bill's like 400 or 400, so, you know, 20, 30 dollars, something like that.
10% or something.
That was just one idea, but the taxes keep going up and up, rent keeps going down, so that's why us landlords are struggling, the commercial rents are still going down, not up, but it was just an idea.
I think it's a credit deal, like I said, incentivize people, tax credits, reduction of these things. You can't force people to stop building backwards buildings with no front door and a light post, it's nowhere.
His wife did.
Because it met all the...
It did. Okay?
Can I do a quick MAMA report on some Secretary of MAMA?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, I'm Scott Henderson, Secretary of MAMA, we're having our first annual car show in conjunction with the high school on the 21st of September. We're having vendors come in, we have a DJ coming in, we're gonna line the whole back section in front of the stadium, it's gonna be the cars, the vendors are gonna be where we set up for stampede, I think the publicity goes out this week, into the various papers, I know we have one journalist here, and we're hoping for a good event. We piggybacked with the school, with our youth representative, and, second thing, MAMA, oh, the carnival went really well, we ended up raising about 600 dollars from the carnival towards the scholarships that we did at the high school, we're now officially doing two 1,000 dollar scholarships at Manchester Valley High School, they were awarded last year, and then we donated another 250 to the fire department, I believe, from that, from the carnival event.
Correct, and that 250 dollars went into the Brent Donovan Scholarship Foundation.
That's all I have, thank you.
What time is that question? Sorry.
And also, the new directory, the new tri-business association directory is out, it's hot off the press?
Got it yesterday, the, that's been an entire year, actually, two years, we went to print our own directory, did not get enough support to cover the costs, contacted Hampstead, it ended up being Hampstead, the Main Street Business Association in Hampstead, and MAMA, we came up with a combined directory, and if I'm not mistaken, it was the 30th print, or 20th print, or, it was some kind of number, a certain number, but the directory went out to all of, to all of Manchester zip codes, and all the Hampstead zip codes, as a publication. The town's in there, you guys did a, the town wrote a great ad for the town of Manchester, and it should be, it should be a really good roll. So, we mailed out 10,000 copies.
Yeah, 10,000.
10,000 copies we mailed out, so...
Very good. What time is the car show?
I think setup is at, it's like 7:00 in the morning, 9:00. It ends at 4:00. I'm Pete Gary, I'm with MAMA as well.
Okay.
And I just wanted also, as Steve said, we're planning, we're right in the beginning planning stages, we're trying to set up a Halloween parade for the kids, and we got some ideas going, basically, the parade would be going on the sidewalk, on the east side, wouldn't cross Main Street, there would be a judging stand along the way, where the judges would pick out winners for funniest costume, scariest, best homemade, different categories, and there would be, at the south end, which we don't know exactly where that is yet, would be a cake walk, and on the north end, would be another cake walk, only it would be a pizza walk, because it would be up by Liliana Brothers Pizza. So, we're in the planning stages, and open to some ideas, but we've got a basic concept there, where it would be, one of the debates was, well, is it a parade, and does it go just in one direction, that's it, and I personally think it should be more back and forth, where they can roll around, and they can be going down south for the cake walk, and going back north for the pizza walk, it's all, the whole event would be, you know, more than two hours. So that's just in the planning stages.
You didn't pick a date yet?
We don't want to do it on Halloween night.
Right.
Because they want to, everybody, the kids want to go out trick or treating, so we would probably be looking the night before, but that hasn't been set yet.
Okay.
Anything else for this board?
Mayor, I've got some flyers, just, I'll give them to Steve, do we already have these out for folks?
We do, they should be in the front log.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyway, just make everybody aware of these flyers, if you haven't seen them, just pick one up, and read about the stormwater management, because although we've been talking a lot about it, as Steve said, pretty soon it will be impacting each of us as individuals and families, not just the town, so...
Very good. Anything else? No, did you take a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Alright, goodnight, everyone.